Chair will entertain a motion to move from closed session to open session.
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we return to open session.
Got a motion, second, return to open session, any discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously. If you notice, we have two board members, Dr. Doug Knight and Mr. Ken Poindexter, that are zooming in with us. Gentlemen, can you hear us okay?
I can hear you fine. I can hear you.
There we go, all right, it's working, excellent, thank you all. The Iroshitz School Board of Education is now in open session for the month of December 2020. It is our policy to begin our meeting with a moment of silence in which board members, staff, and guests may privately reflect in their own way for the health and welfare of our citizens during this trying time. Most importantly, please pray for our children. Please join me in a moment of silence. Tonight, our colors will be presented by the Career School, Technical School Academy, better known as CATS, Fire Training Honor Guard, so please join us in Pledge of Allegiance.
for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we move into our agenda, I would like to clarify our public comment signup procedure. Public comment will be immediately after our recognitions. Anyone wishing to speak to the board may sign up prior to the start of public comments. Per board policy 2310, public comments will be limited to 30-minute total. While the board welcomes our shareholders' views, please remember comments should not be slanderous or personal in nature. The board does not usefully respond to public comments. Board members, Dr. James, do we have any changes or additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, it will be E, Letter to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association Resolution. Each of you have that on your desk, at your desk, and would like, quick discussion on that, please.
And that will be, that will be a voting item.
Correct.
Correct, thank you. Any other changes? Dr. James, are we good on the agenda?
Yes, Chairman Page.
Motion to accept agenda?
Mr. Chair, make a motion that we accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to accept the amended agenda, all in favor of I?
Aye.
Oppose, no, carries unanimously, thank you very much. At this time, I will turn over the meeting to the Superintendent, Dr. Jeff James, where he will head up the election of a board chairman and vice chairman.
Thanks, Chairman Page. At this time, I would open nominations for the chairperson of the Iroshitz School Board of Education. Are there any nominations for chairperson for the Iroshitz School Board of Education?
Dr. James, I'd like to nominate Martin Page.
Martin Page has been nominated as chairperson. Are there any further nominations? Seeing that there's no further nominations, I'm closing the nominations at this time. Since we are virtual, by law, we have to do a roll call. Mr. Poindexter, please share the name of who you're voting for at this time.
I'm abstaining from voting.
Okay, abstention. Okay, Mr. Howell?
I also will abstain.
Mr. Kennington?
I vote for Mr. Page.
Mr. Knight?
I vote for Mr. Page.
Mr. Carver?
I vote for Mr. Page.
And of course, Mr. Page.
I'll vote for Mr. Page.
Okay.
Charles, would you vote?
I don't have to, but I'd vote for Mr. Page.
Charles? Was getting to you. Okay, it looks like Mr. Page has been elected as a chairperson of the Iroshitz School Board of Education with a 5-2 vote. Thank you, we'll move on to vice chairman. Nominations are now open for vice chairperson of the Iroshitz School Board of Education. Are there any nominations for vice chair of the Iroshitz School Board of Education at this time?
Dr. James, I'd like to nominate Todd Carver.
Bill Howell for vice chairman.
Okay, Bill Howell has been nominated, are there any further nominations?
Dr. James, I'd like to nominate Todd Carver.
Mr. Kennington has nominated Todd Carver, is there any further nominations? Okay, some closing nominations at this time, we'll be doing a roll call. Please share the name of who you're voting for when I call your name. Mr. Poindexter?
Mr. Howell.
Mr. Howell?
Mr. Howell.
Sam Kennington?
Mr. Carver.
Doug Knight?
Mr. Carver.
Mr. Carver?
Mr. Carver.
Mr. Page?
Mr. Carver.
And Charles?
Mr. Carver.
Mr. Carver. Okay, Mr. Carver has been elected vice chair of the Iroshitz School Board of Education by a 5-2 vote. Thank you, gentlemen, we will now close out the vote for chair and co-chair.
Before you close out the vote, Dr. James, could you go back and clarify, I thought you said the five, it was a 5-2 vote for Mr. Page, and my understanding is that vote would be 5, 0, and 2. And I would defer to our attorney how that should, how that should read with two abstentions.
I think that would appear to be the correct interpretation, Mr. Kennington, that 5, 0, 2 on the chairman, since there was not a competitor in the race other than Mr. Page.
Okay, with the abstentions, I stand corrected, just to let the record show. Thank you, any further comments on the vote tonight? If not, I will turn it back over to our duly-elected chair, Mr. Page.
I'd like to thank the board for their support in me being chairman. I look forward to another year at that position, and I will publicly state that this will be the last year I would entertain being in that position. I have two more years in my, as I say most of the time, my sentence, but in my term. And I do feel we'll need a new chair next year, and look forward to that. At this time, we'll move-
Well, before you leave that, you might add that they wrote a movie about this one time, Never Say Never Again, so we'll wait until next year, thank you.
I think I'm pretty-
I'll second that motion, Mr. Kelly.
I think I'm pretty sure on that one, but we'll see. No, I'm sure of that one. This time, we're moving to our non-consent, our consent agenda. For the consent agenda, we've got personnel and minutes of November 2nd and November 9. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion on approving the consent agenda or discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition, of course, of item E, the resolution to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association under the agenda.
I'm a little confused on that.
I probably am too, and-
That was placed in E on the non-consent.
Very good, so I make, my motion would be to approve the non-consent agenda.
No, the consent agenda.
Whatever.
You are, all right.
Just wanted to confuse you-
Yes, that, that does include the minutes, personnel report and the minutes are on our consent agenda.
Next time.
Do you want to try that again?
No, Mr. Carver's gonna make it for me.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We got a motion, in second, approve the consent agenda, any discussion? All in favor of I?
Aye.
I oppose, no. Did I get ayes from zoomers? Both of them, okay, it's unanimous, and thank you very much. At this time, we'll move into our recognitions. Mr. Todd Williams, I believe you're up first.
Graham Technical Education is really proud to recognize a student, a senior from North Iroshitz High School who was a presidential, US Presidential Scholars Scholars Program Award winner, and that student is Ms. Laurel Gray, and she is here with us tonight, so I'd like for her and her parents and sister to come up, to be recognized, please. Laurel is regular here, she's been recognized a lot of times, but I just want to give you a little bit of background information, she is one of five students selected from the state of North Carolina, and she will represent us nationally, and that contest will happen in January, and we will find out in May where she stands, so outstanding, you represent us well, congratulations.
With Mr. Poindexter not here, I'm gonna let Mr. Howell be the board rep to present that with the superintendent. This time, Mr. Mihal, I believe you've got a presentation.
Mr. Page, members of the board, Dr. James, thank you for having us tonight. We have a really cool thing we wanted to share with you about Cloverleaf IB. You know, we were, have a student council that's very active in our school, and our student council was discussing acts of service, and the board tonight also showed acts of service and the service to your community, and we discussed service to our community quite a bit, and they talk about it quite a bit, and it came to an idea of there's a student council to present tonight, also to present you a gift, because it is the season of giving, and we wanted to present you a gift for your acts of service. And I'll turn it over to, we have Lucy Cottle here and Sully Dobson, both fourth graders at Cloverleaf, and they're just really excited to be here, and they built this presentation for you, all by themselves, and they made scripts, and very eager to share that tonight, so I'm gonna invite them up.
Hi, I'm Lucy, so what is IB? Being IB means opening our minds to different and new ideas, places, foods, and cultures. We also learn the learner profile traits and understand what they mean. What is our IB mission? Here's some of it. The International Baccalaureate aims to develop inquiring, knowledgeable, and caring young people who help to create a more peaceful world throughout intercultural understanding and respect. This is our Cloverleaf mission. At Cloverleaf, our minds are engaged to learn, our hearts are ready to love, and our hands are ready to help others. This is how we have changed our school to look more IB physically. This is our school's IB seal. On it is our learner profile traits, as well as the IB themes in our globe in the middle. This is our school wall that we see every day. It reminds us of how we are learning to become global citizens. Service in action. Connecting our learning to ourselves and people all over the world can affect how we do things in the future. For example, knowing that not everyone has a good education can affect how we spend our time and can make us feel more grateful. Examples of service in action. We have done penny awards where we collected over $1,800 for American Red Cross. We also did socktober where we collected over 150 pairs of socks for Fifth Street Ministries, and we also made Christmas cards for veteran patients at the VA Hospital. That was what we've done so far this year, but last year, we did a coat drive and gave them to people who needed them. Another thing that we did last year was when we collected supplies for humane society. Also, we did a supply drive for hurricane victims. This is our grow wall. Lucy and I have checked it every day to make sure the pH levels in the water are good. We have red leaf lettuce, oak leaf lettuce, and basil. Our goal is to get enough to give to the cafeteria. If you have any questions, please tell us.
I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I have a comment just to make about you young ladies standing up here in front of all these people out here tonight, and just being willing to do that as fourth graders, that, you know, I really think that's something to be bragged on right there, and I appreciate you guys coming out and telling us a little bit about your school.
Fourth grade, now they had to stand in ovation, congratulations, we look forward to great things. Mr. Mihal, thank you for your staff, and all your teachers, and everybody working with these young people, and that just shows you how successful some of our children can be.
Thank you, and we do have one last- And we do have one last thing to give you. They're going to walk up a little gift for you.
Charles, maybe you're getting your Corvette.
I swear I looked for that this week.
I'm sorry.
And thank y'all. That, it's things like this that just make, especially anytime but the holidays, to see all the things that our schools do for other people and other organizations and stuff. But thank you again, young ladies. At this time, I've got Ms. Tina Wilson with her recognition. This is getting to be a yearly thing with this group.
Good evening, board, chair, and Mr. Superintendent, Dr. James. I am pleased to be here again tonight to recognize, yes, it is a yearly thing for Troutman Elementary, but we have a new award to recognize them for. And I didn't even know about this award till Ms. Clennan emailed me, and I've asked her to join me tonight because I want her to tell you about the award she has nominated him for. And I didn't know it till she emailed me excited, saying they had been selected as runner-up. So, I'm going to turn it over to her. And I have to say that I really appreciate Ms. Kressman, the principal, and Ms. Clennan working with our cafeteria staff, the support that they give our cafeteria staff to do all that they do at that school is really, really appreciated. I cannot speak that enough, the support they've given Troutman Elementary School to do these awards and the time it takes to put together all that they do to have to get recognized for these awards. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Clennan. She's going to tell you about the award she nominated him for.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to be part of this recognition for this wonderful team. Maybe just a minute, okay? Just to save time, I'm going to stick to what we have put into the letter because there's so many wonderful things I could say about Ms. Sherry Saunders and her staff, and so I'm going to stick to the point because I could go on and on and on about all the awesome things they've done. Ms. Wilson asked me just to tell a little bit about the contest and how it all came about. Danimals teamed up with the NFL Play 60 to thank K-12 food service professionals for their hard work. Their criteria was to nominate a school that has gone above and beyond to keep its students healthy during the ongoing pandemic for a chance to win an unforgettable virtual NFL recess takeover. When I received the information about the contest, without hesitation, I knew I had to nominate Ms. Sherry Saunders and her team at Troutman Elementary. These ladies go above and beyond their ordinary duties on a daily basis, doing special things to make our students feel special, like writing special messages on bananas and drawing smiley faces on takeout boxes. During the pandemic last spring, they not only made sure our students were fed breakfast and lunch, but also provided meals to daycares in our community. I didn't realize what all our cafeteria staff had to do on a normal day to feed our students until Ms. Sherry took myself and the Phil at Play 60 leadership team on a kitchen tour. I walked away with much more appreciation and respect for our cafeteria staff. Then came the pandemic, and they upped their A-game and hit a grand slam home run in making sure our students received healthy meals on a daily basis. I'm so blessed to be able to work alongside this wonderful and dedicated team. And we were one of the 10 finalists, and there were over 100 schools nominated over, throughout the United States, so I'm honored to be part of this. And we also received a $250 gift card to the NFL gift shop. So, instead of Ms. Sherry and her team buying them something, we just had a Phil at Play 60 poster contest at our school. So, Ms. Sherry allowed our winners to pick prizes from the NFL gift shop and gave that money to our students. So, she's always given, always given and doing things for our students. So, said, "Thank you for giving us this time to recognize them."
And I asked Jada to share the video that the NFL sent when they let them know they had been selected, and also a few pictures of what they have done at that school.
Hey, everybody. NFL running back here, Mark Ingram for the Baltimore Ravens. I heard about the amazing job that the staff at Troutman Elementary has done to care for your students during this pandemic. The special touches like writing messages to the students on bananas to get them smiling is genius. Keep doing what you're doing to encourage your kids to eat healthy and stay safe. It's making a huge difference. Hey, everybody. NFL running-
And them receiving their prizes. And they even put messages on takeout boxes, along with a lot of our other schools, and on the to-go bags, grab-and-go bags, a lot of our schools are doing. And actually, Sherry set the bar for this. A lot of our other schools are doing this now also. All right, and so, we appreciate that award. Ladies, y'all come on up here that are here from the Troutman Elementary, Ms. Kressman, Donnette. And we also have another award. We also going to recognize you with, Sherry. I slipped this one in on you. Sherry has done what we call the Golden Achievement Award for the fourth year this year. First year, she got third place, second place, and she didn't stop. She won first place. She got first place last year. And I thought, "Well, okay, she's good. She's like, I mean, this book she does is this thick, y'all." I meant and told you, bring that book, Sherry. Anyway, but Sherry didn't know this, but we do have a plaque we're going to present her and her staff with that DPI sent, because she did send another book that was due back in March for 1920 school year. And we, of course, we all know what happened in March, COVID-19. So, DPI was not able to get together and grade, I mean, over, normally over 100 books come in from 100 different schools. So, to be selected first and second, two years, and then, again, do it this year. But the Golden Achievement Award is benchmark set for schools. Then they have to show their excellence, and they have to not only do what they do every day in the kitchen, serving our students, they have to go above and beyond, and we've already seen they go above and beyond. But to do the Golden Key Achievement Award, they have to do extra professional development in nutrition, operations, administration, communications, and marketing. And they've done that. And again, and with Donnette and Ms. Kressman's support, because a lot of what they've done with the students to get the award is things they've done throughout the school year with their students. And again, I appreciate your service to our cafeteria and how y'all work together. That's how a school should work together, every department, and I appreciate that very much. So, ladies, come on up. I'd like to present you with this plaque, Golden Achievement plaque. I'm sorry, I can't tell you. I have no doubt if they graded the books, you'd got number one again, Sherry. But you're number one in our books, but we appreciate that. Donnette, Ms. Kressman, y'all get in there too, in the picture. Lisa Flowers is the supervisor at Troutman Elementary. She helps Sherry and gives her the support she needs to do a lot of what she does, so
Thank you for everything you're doing. Normally, I get to go over to Troutman every year and work a breakfast with them. And the most fascinating thing to me is these ladies know every child in that school by name. I honestly do not know how. And they speak to them, "How are you doing? You doing all right? How's your day going?" And it's just a happy place to be, and you're feeding the kids, and thank y'all very much. Okay, at this time, we will move into our public comment. Mr. Rogers, you got me a sign-up sheet.
Hi, good evening. I'm Rob Murphy, Mooresville, North Carolina. Oh, sorry. I just want to point out, I, you know, I know the board. I've had interactions with them, and comments are taken or not taken, and that's your prerogative. But I've noticed during the committee of the whole meetings, the committee will take exception to the rules and vote on issues. Last week, their issue was a fairly large contract to the architects, I believe, of the new high school, which I don't really know. I believe it's somewhere between $5 and $20 million expense. And it did, there was a mix-up with the communication of the board members, so they did not hold the vote. And although I don't have an issue with the vote itself and how they would vote, I think if they're going to suspend the rules and have a vote during a committee of the whole meeting, the public should have an opportunity to comment on issues like this. Again, it's fairly lowly at these meetings. I don't think it's that big an issue, but I just think as a principle, the public deserves an opportunity to speak and make comment on issues, especially of that magnitude. I have no objection to it moving for tonight. I just think as a policy, when you suspend the rules, you should offer an option for the public to speak. Appreciate your time. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. This time, we have a lot of policies. These are first readings. We went through these. Dr. Lusane, you've got the first 14, I believe. I'm sorry, did I skip one? Oh, man, I skipped two things. I'm sorry. Right. I just, I'm trying to get us out of here tonight. The first thing we got, and this is a voting item, approval of architectural bid for the new high school. Dr. Miller and Mr. Hager.
Thank you, Chairman Page, members of the board. I'd like to make one clerical correction. This is approval of an architectural firm is not a bid. There's no money involved in this. It's just simply choosing an architect or architectural firm to work for the, with the new high school. So, just for the public record, I want to be sure that was the case. What we have done, you have had, the past week, we have had the, all of the 16 respondents to the RFQ have been available for board review. Also, the committee, the review committee, and that was not necessarily a selection committee, it was just a review committee to help us with the selection process, has done their due diligence. And so, I want to ask Dr. James to present to the board the qualified candidates and move forward with an approval process.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Originally, of course, 16 architects bid on the opportunity to be the architect. And out of this, a very rigorous process, there were six questions asked, and the group that was put together to go through the rubric came up with three distinct finalists. These are Adams and Associates based in Mooresville, the DLR Group based in Charlotte, North Carolina, and Morrisburg, which is also based in Charlotte. All three good companies, of course, all 16 good companies. But one of the things we based the recommendation that we're going to present tonight on is the present, we asked these three to come back with a presentation, gave them all the same time limit. We were looking for quality over quantity. Didn't really matter how many schools you have built or projects you've been involved in, but the quality of those, excellent references, the ability to respond to project requirements, questions, problems on a timely manner, and the number of projects in the state, the number of projects that you've done in our county, if you've done any, and of course, a proven record. So, our recommendation, looking at that criteria, again, from 16 bids, we chose to present to the board, again, just our recommendation from the group, Adams and Associates. That's not to say the other two weren't great companies. It's just that the reason we chose Adams was, again, the quality of presentation they had that was tailored to what we felt our needs were in Iroldt County. Quality orientation, of course, they've done 750 projects this, thus far in North Carolina, and actually 506 projects here in Iroldt County. And they've had a proven track record on 69 projects, all within budget and all with high quality for Iroldt State schools already. Their innovation in customer service they have provided us thus far, and quality assurance and cost controls. So, again, out of the three, it was not an easy decision. Two of these had a tie in the original rubric, but after their presentations, the committee would like to make a recommendation, and it's up to the board to decide who you would choose, but our recommendation from these three would be Adams and Associates.
Mr. Chairman, Dr. Miller made those presentations available to us. I came out Friday, as well as you did, to review those. I would like to tell the board that a year ago this past November, I visited with all three, actually, they had booths at our state convention, and I asked all three of them the same question. And the question was, "What could you build a turnkey high school for for 1,500 students?" And I heard the number, in the Cal meet, now it's 1,600. None of them said 80 million. They all said in the 90s. And that was a year ago this past November. Now, since the bond passed, maybe they can do it. I don't know. And I will ask, I did ask Adams and Associates one other question since they've done other projects for us. And I asked them, "When you build a school, why do you dig a bowl and pull, put the school down in it and then charge us a quarter million to a half a million dollars for drainage?" And I didn't get an answer to that question.
They've not done any of those projects.
I thought they'd done one other.
They did not.
Well, I asked them that question. So, anyway, I didn't get an answer to that question. However, I will go along with the committee, so if it wants, if you need a motion, I'll go ahead and, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the committee's results and use Adams and Associates.
Have a motion to have a second.
I'll second that motion. And just for discussion's sake, having sat there and listened to it, I think the answer that I got was, yeah, you can build it. It just depends on where, you know, you got to give and take in certain areas. And so, no doubt, you can build it for $80 million. Is it going to have the quality features in it that you want? And we're trying to optimize that, and we felt like we could do that with Adams and Associates.
Well, we're not known to be a climate. We have no way of knowing. We don't have a crystal ball. We really don't know. We were given 80 million by the county in a bond, so that's our starting point. That's what we've got. There's going to be some, I'm sure there'll be give and take, but until we figure out, you know, construction costs changing, we're, what, two years, three years from-
you know, construction costs changing, we're, what, two years, three years from digging, three years from starting, it's just like so many things. It's just, it's just, we won't know till we get there. But this is our first step by approving the architect. And I have a motion and a second to approve Adam and Associates as architect for the new high school. Any further discussion? Our Zoom members, gentlemen, you got a discussion? You guys are still there, right? Dr. Knight, Mr. Poindexter, are you still there? Redlow?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, sir, I got you now, Dr. Knight. You're...
I am, I'm with the discussion as such, and have nothing more to add.
Okay. Mr. Poindexter?
Can you hear me?
Now we go, now we got you. Yes, sir.
Okay. I have nothing more to add as well.
Very good. There's nothing else. This time, all in favor, aye? Aye? Opposed, no?
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Larry, the 21-22 calendar, which we discussed at length in the committee of the whole meeting.
Good evening, Chairman Page, school board, and Dr. James. So I bring back tonight the 2021-22 calendar in hopes that we can get a vote tonight and find out where you guys stand tonight after a week since we discussed it last week.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion at this time that we table this until another time.
We've got a motion on the floor to table this until a later date. Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got two seconds. Any discussion on tabling this motion? All in favor of tape? Let me check with my Zoom. Dr. Knight, Mr. Poindexter?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add? All in favor of tabling this motion to a later date? Say aye?
Aye.
Did I get both y'alls?
Aye.
I'm a no.
We have, so it's tabled six to one. Thank you very much.
And may I ask, are we going to table it until January or until...
You can put it back on the agenda for January. Feel free to.
Okay.
Okay. Now, we go to our first readings. Board members, we had these, we went over these at the committee of the whole meeting, which is actually our first first reading. You've had a week to look at these. Do we have any questions or comments to Dr. LaSane about her policy she presented? I take that as a no. Thank you very much. Mr. Ribic, Ms. Cooper, y'all had policies 15 through 26. Board members, you've had a week to look at these and study them. Do you have any questions of Mr. Ribic and Ms. Cooper?
Mr. Page, under policy 3000, at the meeting last Monday, I did ask about the, what's the new term for advanced ed?
Cognia?
I'm sorry?
Cognia.
Cognia.
Okay. And have we had any further discussion, you know, on that as far as the school system?
Yes, sir. We are revisiting, looking at advanced ed again, or at cognia. So we have talked with the superintendent, and we're going to look at how to bring that back so that we'll be in compliance with the board policy.
So we're looking to bring that back, and so we're going to leave this policy as it is, as it is written tonight for us. Thank you.
That's the recommendation, but it's always, it's up to you all.
Well, sure. Thank you, though.
Yes, Mr. Kennington, what I've asked him to do is also look for other organizations that were similar caliber that could accredit our school system. There are a few players in the field. I'm also going to reach out to the other 12 superintendents in our regional education consortium. We represent the largest number of students in the state and get their input on who they're using and their thought process. I do know that at the time, it probably was put aside. It was due to the cost restrictions. And I will tell you, as working for advanced ed, that there was a shift in the way we were doing assessments for school systems and schools. And some of us that were used to the old way of doing things, that were pretty pragmatic, in my opinion, did not like the new platform that they chose to go to. And at that time, I think it's when you saw some school systems decide to pull out from advanced ed. So I have no problem. I know those individuals and will work with them for many years to have some conversations. But we'd also look at some other accreditation agencies to bring the board, hopefully, two or three players in the field, so that we could select the best one for our use here in Iredell County. So thank you for your interest in this and pushing us forward on it.
Any other questions, comments? Dr. Knight, Mr. Poindexter?
None on my side. None.
Thank you. Thank you all. This time, Dr. James, you've got three policies.
Yes, we discussed those last week, and these come from the School Board Association, as the writing, most of these do. I think a conversation the executive team had today with Mr. Shatley and some training. General statute, of course, the School Board Association does a best effort, attempt, to put it into practical policy that coincides with the general assembly requirements. Local boards, of course, and upon your recommendation and mine, can look at changing some of these, but I would tell you, these are pretty solid, and if we change any wording in them, we're going to have to send them back for attorney approval to make sure we coincide with the state general statute. So I'm good with these. We talked about them last week. So my recommendation is we proceed with them for the next 30 days, and if no comments from the general public or staff about these, we proceed to approve them at next board meeting.
Board, any questions, comments for Dr. James?
None.
Very, very good. We will bring these back in January for the second reading and a vote. Thank you very much. This time, we'll move to D, COVID update. Dr. Nutting, Kelly Marcy, and Ms. Karen Curly.
And you just get me tonight, so I'm just going to start real quick. This will, try to go through this quickly. You all asked for a COVID update. Good evening, Chairman Page, Dr. James, and members of the board, sorry. On Wednesday of last week, we had yet another meeting with the ABC Science Collaborative. It is a group out of Duke University that we are working with very closely as we continue on this COVID journey. Jada, can you go to the next slide there for us? What you're going to see here tonight, I'm just going to kind of gloss over it. If you want to look at it more thoroughly later, I'm more than happy to share it with you. This is the most up-to-date information that we have at this time. In fact, just on Friday, we received even more updated information about some studies that have been released and that kind of thing. The ABC Science Collaborative is an initiative that brings together public schools, primarily started in North Carolina. We are one of 11 school districts in the collaborative that has been back to school in a face-to-face learning opportunity. And so really studying all different aspects of this. As you know, I don't need to show you this slide, but as the cases climb in, in the entire country, there's a lot of discussion about whether or not children should be in school. And you'll see there, Iredell County, as of last week, is one of the red counties. And so we're very knowledgeable about this, but in our discussion with the ABC Science Collaborative, what does that mean for our schools? So here's what we're doing, and you can go to the next one there. What our research shows us is that schools aren't super spreaders. Now, they've been studying this since March, and there was a lot of fear in the beginning that children were going to come to school and we were going to give everybody COVID. They do not appear to be major spreaders of COVID-19. You see there's some numbers there about students in 47 different states in the United States within the last two weeks of September. But also on the other side of that slide there, you'll see that these science, scientists and these doctors and communicable disease doctors and pediatric doctors are looking at spread of COVID in China and France and Australia. So this is not just about Iredell County. We're part of something much bigger than that, and we were actually talking about it on the phone the other day, how exciting it is to be part of such important research. This just gives you a little bit of information, and I'm not really going to go through and read all this to you, but what it tells us is that, and you see there where it says "results," 11 of 56 participating North Carolina schools opened for in-person instruction during the first nine weeks. We agreed to be part of the study, and you'll see there, all those numbers, that's information that's been gathered meticulously by our school nurses, by our lead nurse, Karen Curly, reported very specifically to our friends at Duke University. The last thing under "results" is really the most important thing. Most cases of secondary transmission of the 11 counties that they looked at were related to a lack of face coverings. So one thing we've really talked a lot about with the doctors is secondary spread. In other words, if you come to school, are you likely to get COVID from the person you're sitting near or from the teacher that is teaching you in the classroom? The answer to that is no. You're less likely to have secondary spread in our schools than you are in the larger community. Now, what has contributed to that low secondary transmission? And Dr. James can tell you that we've hit on it in weekly and bi-weekly meetings with superintendents. I've had the pleasure also of being in on many of those meetings, and they have hammered home to us the three W's. We must wash our hands, we must wear our masks, and we must maintain six feet of distance. In an effort to really work on this, we've done a "I pledge to do my part" campaign, and that included a video that we shared with all of our staff through a module that we have in our professional development. We had 88% of our staff, where they were more than happy to sign that pledge and say that they were willing to wear a mask all day, all the time, and work very hard to keep six feet of distance and wash their hands regularly. So here's the important thing, and I think, you know, I know, we all feel very strongly about this. High rates of COVID-19 in our community do not mean an increased secondary transmission in schools. If we follow our three W's, schools are a great place for children to be. Dr. Daniel Benjamin, who's been one of our partners in this, he actually stated, he's up in Raleigh, and he said, "I have four young boys." He said, he's a pediatric communicable disease doctor, and he said, "I commend you for bringing your children back to school." He said, "My children are learning from home, and I would do anything for them to be back in the school." Because, he said, "If you took everything away from what happens in school, the reading, the writing, the math, the physical activity, the socialization, the lunches, all of that, if you took all of that away, children would still be better off to be sitting in a school than they would to be in their community, be less likely to contract COVID." And so I like this model here. I think it's a good visual for us. They call it the Swiss cheese respiratory virus defense. And one thing that they really try to hammer home with this is that each thing that we do to try to protect ourselves from COVID-19 has imperfections. And so we really have to enforce multiple layers of protection, and that's where your three W's come in. Next slide. And so here we go. Jada, you can go ahead and go through those real quick. Number one, it's about transparency, and this is one reason why I'm here right now, is to share with you that we're on top of this every day. Number two, contact tracing and testing roadmap. We are, we have, we are working with a company called Qualtrics, and they have a very robust system for us to, to screen for symptoms of COVID and also for us to do contact tracing. Actually, that contact tracing tool will start tomorrow, and I will tell you that Karen Curly, our lead nurse, said that when she got the demo from Qualtrics of how the contact tracing tool would work, she literally started to cry. That's the level of stress that these nurses are under. They're working so hard. And so an opportunity to put technology to work to make their jobs easier is a real relief for them. Our dashboard did go live on Friday. Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to see it. If not, I'm going to share it with you in just a minute. Number four, we're always looking at what lessons we've learned. Number five, a trusted third party for analysis. That's the ABC Science Collaborative. And the metrics, I like what this one says, "Given the experience in North Carolina, Missouri, and elsewhere," this is from the collaborative, "we have data inform how much COVID-19 spread to expect in schools if there is adherence to masking, social distancing, and handwashing." And so what they tell you is that the concepts of secondary transmission and cluster prevention are two extremely primary goals. Now, remember, in North Carolina, you have to have five people in a building in order for it to be counted as a cluster, okay? And we've been very, very fortunate so far. I would say, this week, we're getting closer. Last week and this week are definitely, they match the grid of the trend lines going up. But we're still doing a great job with it. Our principals are committed to this. Again, this is a presentation that all of your principals didn't see. Number seven, again, this is something we've worked with Dr. LaSane and Human Resources to work to prevent pandemic fatigue. One thing we were worried about there for a while, so we didn't want to reprimand people for not, for having COVID fatigue. So we really tried to go at it as a, hey, let's all work together. This is our community. Let's do this for the good of our community. We do have detailed plans. We have detailed plans, Mr. Armstrong, for extracurricular activities and school-sponsored activities. Also, you know, lots of discussion, Kelly Cooper and John Ribic, about fine arts and whether or not we can have band and chorus, really working on that very hard. And then 11, and it has to do with a plan for our transmissions and clusters, and, you know, we're just really crossing our fingers on that a lot. And I love number 12, walk, then run, then sprint. For example, start with a hybrid model and then move to full attendance. We are committed in the Iredell State School to keeping children in school, and that means that we are committed to wearing masks, social distancing, and washing our hands. The last thing I want to show you is our dashboard. Oh, yeah, she's, those are all the different school systems that are involved. This is going to be updated on our website every week and on Friday. And what we tell you at the first part is, these are the schools that have had a case of COVID in the school. So as you can see, we had 18 schools that had at least one case of COVID in them. Now, if they had five, we'd have to tell you it was a cluster. So we're not telling you in that list how many they are, but you know it's not five, right? So it's, and actually, we haven't, you know, we've, we've really been able to maintain it very closely. Usually, it's one or two. And you'll see, too, we've broken it down by middle schools and high schools. The next part is interesting. One thing that's interesting about this next page, you'll see that for students who are quarantined from school contact, that number is 231 from last week. So you'll see that the students that are quarantined from school contact and also the students who are quarantined from community contact are the two highest numbers. Now, that means that kids that are quarantined from community contact means they were within six feet for 15 minutes or more of maybe somebody get... six feet for 15 minutes or more of maybe somebody at church, or maybe they went and spent the night with someone, or maybe they were playing basketball in the neighborhood, on the neighborhood basketball court. So the community contacts impact us at school, but they're not, we didn't do it, okay? So, and then for the school contact, the 231 is high for elementary schools, because we're no longer doing the six feet of distance, because we have all the kids back in the classrooms five days a week. So a lot of the time, if you have one second grader who tests positive, you may take out 22 second graders for a quarantine. The good thing about that is if you take 22 of them out for quarantine, which is required by the Health Department, what we're finding is that those 22 kids are not getting COVID. So we're not, the number isn't going up, but we are sending a lot of people to the house. You'll see there, the students with symptoms are 110. So this is a day and age where if you've got a little cough or a runny nose, we tell you to stay home. So you'll see that that happened there. So we're looking at, you know, 500, 600 kids that are quarantined. If you go up to where our staff is, let's see, staff, yeah, 30 that were quarantined from, 30 staff for, for school contact, significantly lower than the students. Again, this has to do with their training, what they've been asked to do. They're working very, very hard to keep that six feet of distance. Sometimes you just can't help it, right? But that's an excellent number. You'll notice, too, that the quarantine staff from community contact is higher than the school contact. That's because, exactly what we said, we think you're better off to be in school than you are just to be in the community. You're less likely to contract COVID if you're at school. You'll see there, we had 19 positive staff members and 19 positive students. If you look there at the percentage, I think that's important. That's less than 1% of both of those populations. Again, the highest percentage here is from students who were quarantined from community contact. So that is our information for today. Do you have any questions for me?
Very good. I just want to say, I really like the new dashboard, and we see this out, we put this out in public. You see it in some of the news outlets. I'm very proud of the transparency Iredell Statesville School has done for our parents and our community to make sure they know what we're doing. I'm also very proud of what our system has done. It's amazing to me how well Iredell Statesville School has reacted to this pandemic, all the way back from March to, to now in December. We've done a wonderful job, our maintenance staff, we're keeping, you know, our buildings clean, our kids are doing a wonderful job. You just can't say enough about our children, that they're just, they're trying to do what they're asking to do, which is just, it's working right now. So let's just hope and pray that it keeps working and that this vaccine is our savior. So any other questions, comments? If not, we'll move to E, North Carolina High School Athletic Association Resolution. I'd like to think Mr. Howell has, has worked on this, and we had asked him last meeting to work on some areas that we're concerned with, with the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. Mr. Howell, since you kind of pushed this, I'm going to ask you if you'll read this for the public, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can't take credit for most of this, because Dr. Nutting and Dr. James polished up what I had down, and I'm sure there were some lawyers that got involved in this. But whereas, during the state of emergency due to the pandemic created by COVID-19, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association adjusted all high school athletic seasons. Whereas, the adjustment of the seasons now require some fall sports to begin practiced in January and February, the coldest months of the year. Whereas, other states did not delay the start of fall sports to extend that they were, to the extent that they were delayed by the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. Whereas, local boards of education had little opportunity to provide input into the decision-making process for the season adjustments. Whereas, during the COVID-19 pandemic, the North Carolina High School Athletic Association also began its quadruple conference realignment process. Whereas, the increase of percentage of schools in 4A and in 1A divisions, 20 to 25% for 21-25 realignment process, will require smaller schools to compete with much larger schools in both divisions. Whereas, this has the potential to negatively impact some of our schools and our students, as well as giving larger schools an advantage in conference play. Whereas, local boards of education were not provided significant input into the decisions to reduce the number of classifications, nor into the conference realignment decision. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Iredell Statesville Schools, Board of Education, one, the local education agencies and their boards of education need the opportunity to provide significant input for decisions regarding our student athletes, and those decisions to adjust season schedules and the reduction of number of classifications. Number two, that the North Carolina High School Athletic Association should implement a system that seeks adequate input directly from local school board members before the adoption and implementation of large-scale changes to high school athletics in North And it was adopted on the 14th day, if, if the board agrees to adopt it, and there are signature lines for the board members and chair and the vice chair.
Mr. Howell, I have a couple of questions. You know the High School Athletic Association bylaws very well, and do they allow for input from local boards of education? Is there anything in those bylaws that they're governed by state that local boards of education have any input at all?
The only way that a local board would have input would be to talk to their principals, their high school principals, and ask them to vote in a certain way. That would be their biggest way of input. But as far as a local board, you know, having a claim to anything, that we do not.
So are you asking them in this resolution to change your bylaws?
I can't do that, but I am saying that we're not satisfied with it. And we didn't, as, as you know, and we had discussed, I think, last month's board meeting, that it may end up costing us between $800,000 and $1 million to have sports this year. And that is still something that we have to consider. We just approved a lot, I mean, an architect today, and that's $80 million tax dollars, and I don't take that lightly. And I don't take spending an extra million dollars lightly either, but I also know the value of athletics in high school, as you do, sir.
And the other thing that we had talked about was the endowment fund, and we all know that their board of directors authorized $4 million for the, I'm not sure how many high schools now in North Carolina, but to be divided by that number of high schools. And I think the North Carolina High School Athletic Association has something like nearly $40 million in their endowment fund. And we had talked about asking them to increase that, or at least look at if they gave the schools $4 million to then waive the catastrophic insurance fee, and I forget what the other fee was, in, in addition to that. And why is that not a part, why did you choose not to put that in, in here?
Well, I think that becoming too cluttered, and, and we don't really have that much say. The board of directors makes the decisions for the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. Now, each school principal has a vote. So if there's any change to the bylaws, then the principals would have to do that. Now, I, I don't want the Department of Public, Department, the Department of Public Instruction to take over high school athletics, because they'll make a big mess of it. But at the same time, I agree with you that we didn't get our fair share. Now, let me share something else with you. They cut down football season from 11 games to 10. Now, when they started this endowment process, they told the high schools, okay, you can play the extra 11th game, but it becomes an endowment game, and we get, I think it's 50% off the top before you pay any bills. Now, since they started that in the 90s, I think, or, yeah, late 90s, they have quite, as you mentioned, they have about $40 million in an endowment fund. Now, they have been sending profit-sharing checks to the high schools, which is pennants, actually, very little. But what I disagree in their new schedule is they say, okay, you can't play 11 games, you can only play 10. And you will classify one of those games as an endowment game, so we can continue to get your money. And so I, I tend to disagree with that. But my intent with this was to let them know that we, we don't like what's happened. Even though we can't change it, we don't like it. And, and I said some other things that the lawyers took out, for one reason or another. So, not to get us in trouble, and, and that's fine. But I, I do think, and I know that they were visited by three state senators a week or so ago, and one of the senators reported to me that they didn't like the attitude that they were met with.
By the school athletic director?
Yes, sir. By the director, actually. So, you know, I, I wasn't there, so I don't know. I'm just saying what the senator said to me. And so I, I think it's, you know, it's up to the principals. The principals, you know, have the voting right of the 426 high schools in the state of North Carolina. They could say, hey, you know, we're going to start our own, we're going to start a new one, and you're out. But they're sitting down in Chapel Hill, they've got a nice building, it's paid for. When I started coaching in high school many years ago, there were five people that ran that organization. And now, I don't, I don't know how many there are. There's a bunch. I don't even know what they make. I mean, you know, salaries are public record for teachers and principals and, and, and things like that, but I don't think, I've never been able to see their, their salaries. So I don't know. But I would like for you to, to send this on our behalf, to let them know that we're, we're watching, and we don't agree with everything they've done, and even though we can't do anything about it.
One of the things, I think, if this is approved, that I would like to see is that it is sent to the other 113, whatever it is, boards of education in North Carolina, just to show them what this board's concerns are, in hopes that maybe it might ignite some interest in other boards to follow through. So...
Dr. James, I believe you've spoke with some other superintendents?
Yes. Actually, our regional superintendent's meeting was Friday, and it's, it's sort of like the school calendar. If you benefit from it, you have no problems with it. And so the school systems, that it's not going to hurt their playoffs, they're okay with it. So Cleveland County, for instance, Shelby High School, Richard, why are they going to worry? Shelby High School, you know, gets in the playoffs every year. So those systems that it doesn't impact, really don't have a dog in the fight. And they're, you know, out of 13 systems, I would say that are, you know, I brought up the concern, and three of the other larger systems also brought up the concern, that the lack of, the lack of voice and a huge shift in the way we're going to do classifications was done without superintendents brought into the mix or a conversation throughout the state. And during a time of pandemic, something that could have easily been kicked down the road. And Richard serves on some of those committees, so he's probably more knowledgeable of this than the most of us sitting here. But we can send that out through the superintendent's organization. I can actually share the resolution, if you approve it tonight, with our superintendent's organization, and Dr. Hope can send it out to the under 115 districts. And then we may have some other people decide that it's time to step up and raise our voice. But legislatively, I was contacted by several legislators and did get a copy of a letter that was drafted by Q. That went to some senators, and then received a phone call. So I do know there is some concern that the North Carolina High School Association is sitting on, north of $40 million, and we're in a drastic situation here when it comes to high school sports. And if there ever was a rainy day, I would call this a deluge, and it's time to come off of that. I do commend them for the $4 million, but it, you know, if it would have been 14, 15 million, I don't think we'd be having this conversation tonight. I think we'd all be saying, well, they stepped up to the plate and helped us out. But we do receive some profit-sharing money each year, and the high schools put it together, and I believe I shared it with the board in a Friday update. By the time we pay catastrophic insurance and a dollar membership for each athlete, we actually end up in the hole at most of our schools. It's a negative amount of money. So that was the first conversation that we had. They, they do give us money, but then I was able to turn around and show where that's consumed in fees that are required by the North Carolina High School Association. And as Mr. Howell would say, the organization wouldn't have any money if it wasn't for the endowment games and playoffs. And they charge for both, and that's where they make their money. And of course, they do, again, our athletes are able to compete with other systems, and you have a state winner. So there's some money put back into the athletes, but to think about over the inception to the day, this date and time, that they've accumulated over $40 million, I'm not sure if we're doing enough for our students. And it's, and I will say this, so none of the church members get me. One time at church, as we had a large sum of money in savings, I made the comment, it's not a bank, it's a church. So if you're putting money in the bank, are you really servicing the people you're intended to service? So I would say the North Carolina High School Association, if you've accumulated 40-plus million dollars, are we really doing justice to our athletes and servicing the students from which that money was earned from in school systems? That's my only comment. Thank you, Chairman.
With that comment, Dr. James, would you recommend that a, therefore, for the funds be put in, in this resolution?
If, if that's the wish of the board, I can have it added to the resolution and give you an updated copy in the Friday update. And I think if all of you tell me it's okay after that point, and I get your signatures, we can send it.
I don't want to water anything down. I, I do want, though, to get certainly the, the main thrust of, of our board's concern. And as an individual board member, I am concerned about the endowment fund. I truly am, and I personally would like for it to be a part of this resolution. And I personally would like for it to be a part of this resolution.
So Chairman, I would suggest that the vote be that we amend the resolution to include that, in that upon approval of that recommendation from the board, that I proceed to get signatures after the board has signified by majority Friday in an update that they're okay with the addition, and I will send it to the North Carolina High School Association after I receive that from the board.
And you feel comfortable that the State Board of Education, I mean, the, what am I trying to say? The Boards of Education, what is that title?
North Carolina High School Board.
The Superintendent's Organization, but the North Carolina High School Association?
Yeah, you feel comfortable that they will get this out to the other 115 districts?
I will send it to Jack Hope, who is our representative for superintendents across the state, and I can assure you, he will share it in his Sunday update to all 116 or 115 districts, we'd be 16. So yes, he will get it out and say, here's a resolution that Iredell States will pass, and the realignment, he would, you know, if you want to share it with your board, yes.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with those two additions, I could certainly support the resolution.
Okay, well, I'd like to have our attorney weigh in on the proper way for us to approve this tonight with the changes to be legal.
I believe the best method would be to make sure that the changes are explicitly stated in a motion approving the statement. And then, as long as those changes were explicitly listed, and the board understood and didn't express any concern about understanding the nature of what they're being asked to approve, that can be done. Otherwise, it would potentially require redrafting the document, bringing it back, and having that be reapproved.
Okay, so we need a motion to simply to state that with the addition of whereas that gives our concerns about the North Carolina High School Athletic Association's endowment fund. So whoever who makes a motion, be sure we put that in there. And then, would we need just satisfactory to the superintendent, it can be passed, it could be sent?
I think if the board wanted to defer that to the superintendent, then that would be appropriate, as long as that was what was clearly stated in the motion.
Yeah, I felt like that would be the most legal way to do it.
Well, I would add, I would add then, if you're going to put a line, as Mr. Kennington says, in there about the endowment, that you would start off with, we appreciate the $4 million that you did send, but is there something you could do about some more? Something along that line. Be sure to thank them for what they've done, and then ask for more. That would be my only comment.
Dr. Knight, Mr. Horn Dexter comments?
I have a question for Dr. James.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Speculate, if you could, Dr. James, on possible unintended consequences from doing this, possible lowback.
Well, I would thank Mr. Knight that receiving a copy of the letter, that the senators already, as I would say, put a shot over the bow. So I think the motions already, the actions already put in motion, that there are some concerns across the state with the amount of the endowment fund and the COVID-19. So I'm not sure that the North Carolina High School Association, there's a whole lot they could do. I would just tell you that there's always going to be games that are contested, and we do the appeal process. I would hope that the team that's put together could not be influenced by any action we take here tonight, because it's made up of a diverse group of individuals across the state. Also serving on their board is five superintendent. So on occasion, I have had to call them and express my concerns with some rulings, or potential rulings from that organization. But it's been a, I think Mr. Howe said it, from its inception, it was put together for the right reasons, but I think it has grown to an entity that's so large that it's forgot its humble beginnings and has left out the voice of why it's got itself to where it's at. You know, the money they have come off our athletes across the state. So I can't really foresee any additional unforeseen consequences, because I think the senators that are concerned with the way things are being done have already put the wheels in motion.
Thank you. Just wanted to look at both sides of the issue.
Any comments, Mr. Horn Dexter?
No, sir.
Chairman Page, I would like to say that we're not attacking any individual. You know, it's an organization, and organizations grow, you know, from their inception, maybe to be things they weren't intended to be when they were initially formulated. So it's not, while Q is the person that people typically associate with the North Carolina High School Association, it's a board of, Richard, 15, like 15 different people. So she does report to them, they do talk about things. But again, when we were not putting any more money than what we currently put in during COVID-19 and we're playing sports, I think none of us would be discussing this tonight if we, again, had 14, 15 million pulled out of the endowment and shared with school systems to help during this time.
Well, let me make a motion that we sign and present the letter to the association with the modifications. I second that.
Do we need to be more specific on the modification?
No, because we've already said that we're going to send it to them, and let them do it, and put it back in the update. And it would be okay unless we have comments.
I would agree, I think that's correct. If the board consents in its vote to giving that discretion, then it doesn't need to specifically state.
With approval of the superintendent.
Mr. Kennington maybe want to be more specific in what he was asking, to make sure that there's no confusion.
Yeah, but once they get that written, Mr. Kennington will see it, and he can add to it at that time.
I feel very comfortable with what the superintendent has outlined.
Certainly.
So with the superintendent's decision, he will send it around, and you can, everyone can speak with him about it. Once he's satisfied, then we're ready to go.
True.
Okay. I do want to ask, and Mr. Howe, you can probably answer this, in the last whereas, do we want to say local boards, or should we say school systems? Because it really kind of is the system, not us.
I would only say that since this is coming from the Iredell States for Board of Education, then we need to leave it like that. That would be my suggestion, but if you'd like to change it, I don't have a problem. School systems might not have the same impact that a board of education, since we are elected. But that would be totally up to this board, sir.
I was just asked, and some boards probably don't want to get involved in it, but then their coaches might. But that's fine, this is from us, so it's fine. I just wanted to ask, thank you. You give me a second, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we've got a motion and second to approve the resolution concerning the North Carolina High School Athletic Association with the modification that whereas will be added to express our concerns on the endowment fund and the amount of money that they're providing back to the systems of North Carolina this year during the pandemic, and with a positive spin to that, thanking them for the $4,000. Any other discussion?
$4 million.
$4 million, $4,000, yeah, $4 million. All in favor, Ryan?
Uh-huh.
Page, no?
Aye.
There we go, carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Howe, for leading that for the board. This time, board member comments?
Mr. Chairman, you know, in the last 30, 40 years, it seems like elected organizations like ours, county commissioners, state legislature, so on, we are faced with many hard decisions. And let me tell you, some of us, it is tough decision many times. But it seems like there's a squeaky wheel over here, and in order to get the wagon on down the road, we just throw the grease at it and keep going, instead of considering what the rest of the wagon needs, which would be the majority. So in our republic, majority means something. And I just want any elected board to weigh all the thoughts, instead of just one group, because that's the way we were elected, not one particular group's opinion. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I congratulate you. I congratulate Mr. Carver on your election. Congratulate Mr. Kelly and Mr. Howe and Mr. Knight as new members. And I guess what I would like to say is, this is a new board, this is a new day, and I hope that more than anything, this board can be as unified as possible. And always remember, and I think this is the important thing, as far as I'm concerned, when we speak, we're speaking for this board. You think you're speaking as an individual at times, but really, it's all of us. And I do hope that we'll always remember that, so that we can be as unified as possible. I think we've done a great job in the past, and I just hope we will continue to work with our new leadership, our new board member, and make this something that we all are very, very proud of, and that we always keep in mind, you know, what is the best interest of the students of the Iredell Statesville School System. So once again, I congratulate all on this board, and look forward to a wonderful year of working together and be as unified as we possibly can be. Thank you, sir.
I could squeeze this in later as another comment, but since it's board comments, let me say that this time, I wish for everybody here, I'll say happy holidays, but I really wish for you an absolutely unbelievably Merry Christmas. And I hope that your season is bright and lovely, and that you get to see every single member of your family and eat all the food on the table. And have a big time, and get together as you can. It's important, I think, it's a major event, and I want you to have a merry time.
Dr. Knight, Mr. Horn Dexter, comments?
Just a quick one, if you can hear me.
Yes, sir.
I just want to say thank you to everyone on the board. You've been very welcoming, Dr. James, and enjoyed getting to know you. I'm going to work hard, and I hope to carry on the tradition of excellence. And as Mr. Kelly said, definitely wish everyone a Merry Christmas. But be sure to be praying for those out there with COVID, and those that are sick in this time, because it's serious, and it's affecting a lot of families. And we just need to, I think, pray and think about those if we can. I hope that's appropriate, that's my heart.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. Mr. Horn Dexter?
I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Very good.
I just would like to say that I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the board, and look forward to this coming year. Lots to learn, I feel like, and just like Mr. Kennington said, I hope that we can work together in going forward, not only us as a board, but us with the commissioners, us with the other key stakeholders in the community, and as Mr. Kelly said, wish everyone a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly kind of stole the thunder for all of us, but I think we all wish all our 20,000 students and our 2,700 employees the happiest, merest of Christmases and a Happy New Year. And I tell you, our employees deserve a couple of weeks off. Our employees have worked the hardest this year they've ever worked in their lives, and I see our supervisors, our directors over there shaking their head. This has been, if there's ever been a need for a two-week vacation, it's 2020. And thank you, teachers, thank you, staff, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, custodians, maintenance staff, and all the assistants, and it's just everybody. So thank you all, and have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I too, and I feel really good about this board, and I've already had conversations with most of the commissioners, and we're looking forward to another great year. COVID has certainly thrown some curves in the road for us, but hopefully, we're going to get out of this, and '21, '22 will be a new, new year. So anyway, thank you. Dr. James, comments?
Thank you, Chairman Page. Of course, I do want to congratulate your reelection as chair, and of course, Mr. Carver as co-chair, and appreciative of Mr. Howe going back on the board, and Mr. Kelly, Mr. Kelly's been on the board a very long time, and so my hopes are, for Christmas, he gets his red Corvette for serving as a public servant for so long. And of course, Doug Knight, congratulations for coming on the board, look forward to working with you. We've already had some conversations about the rocket program he's doing, and some things that one of our astronauts is wanting to partner with us here at CATS to do. So a lot of great things we're working toward here in the Iredell Statesville Schools. And, you know, I will say this, and I've said it before, this district, when I was here as a teacher, roasted ranks, prepared me for the journey I had to become assistant superintendent for five years, and on to superintendent for almost three years in Stanley County. So my heart has always been here, I've lived here all my life, went to school, raised here. But I commend each and every employee for being a trooper during this storm. And unfortunately, it's probably going to continue for a while longer. We're hearing somewhere between six months to a year before we get back to normalcy, but we want to get back in school, and we're hoping and praying that our governor looks at the data. I think we've been a great part of that, or I honestly believe in talking to the powers that be. School systems would have been shut down across the state again. You know, my plea was, look at the data and allow those that are functioning to continue to keep kids in school. And the secondary spread, which Boylan was up on the chart but didn't really get to mention, is 200ths of 1%, almost nonexistent. And we said this from day one, we have to care about our employees and our students and our community. And everyone tries to make a decision, as Mr. Howe, I think, was trying to get to. When you make a decision, people try to polarize on one side or the other decision, and our decisions have to be for the well-being of everyone in the school system, employees, students, parents, et cetera. So when we make a decision to come to school, that doesn't mean we don't care about our at-risk employees. We've made provisions. I would say HR has been inundated with the workload, trying to make sure everyone that needed a provision to work at home could, all the new laws that were thrown at us, trying to make sure we were fair to people with leave. I think we've done an overall good job of making sure people that were at risk were able to teach virtually for a period of time. Unfortunately, most of that is coming to the end, December 31st, unless there's a new federal package. So my hopes are, when we come back from Christmas break, we don't end up with clusters, as Dr. Nutting alluded to tonight, because we're on that very thin line. So I would tell you, if you are going to meet with your families, travel, et cetera, remember the three W's that we put up tonight, you got to wash your hands- You gotta wash your hands. You gotta social distance and wear a mask. And I find it very hard to breathe sometimes with the mask. But, you know, this staff in central office, I would say, we've changed our culture. When we walk into the room, we'll mask up. We try to stay at eight or 10 foot away. So, just continue to work with us there, and we will continue to make this successful. We want nothing more than to have K-12 back in school. It's what's best for students. I cannot tell you the irreputable damage that's being done socially, emotionally, and academically to our 6 through 12 students for not being here. We hear it from parents constantly. And if this board had the authority and power to put them back in school tomorrow, I think our vote tonight would be, we're going back to school. We have to respect the powers that be. Our governor has the executive order. He made that decision based on a lot of things, but he is listening to the data. Again, or we would have been shut down, in my opinion. So, again, we all have to work together as we move forward to make this successful. I do want to send a shout-out during this Christmas holiday season, whichever year you practice, not practices Christmas, but holiday, Kwanzaa, whatever, Hanukkah, et cetera. I'll forget one, I'm sure. But United Way stepped up during this pandemic. And I guess if we, we parallel this with the North Carolina High School Association, you know, one thing about United Way, they put up almost $150,000, Mr. Howe. But yet, last year, I think we were about $70,000 is what we donated. So, we actually got a whole lot more back than we invested. Wouldn't that be great if everywhere you invested, you got that back, Richard? So, we'd be making money from the North Carolina High School Association. But we have raised, even during a pandemic, for United Way, $51,000. So, I want to thank the employees for that. We've done a lot of work this year to put out all the individual agencies that your money goes towards when you donate to United Way. So, thanks again. Do want everyone to have a safe and happy holiday. I do want to say tonight in ending that I think Dr. Lassane, for her service here, I think she said it was somewhere near 20 years in her career here in Iredell State. So, she has done great work through that career, and we wish her nothing but good luck as she goes into a new venture in her life. And hope that she's blessed in that new venture as she moves forward. And I'm sure she'll always remember Iredell County where she started. So, thank you.
I had on my notepad, Dr. Lassane. I was saving you for last to thank you for everything. She started teaching State's for High School a few years.
We're not gonna say the year.
No, we're not gonna say the year, but thank you for everything you've done for us. Any other comments? Charles, your turn.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion adjourned.
Second.
A motion second to adjourn. Any discussion, all in favor, aye? Aye. Pose no? Kerry's unanimously. Thank you very much. Everybody have a Merry Christmas.